Good morning and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Supervisor Pine. Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Sulcom.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
She is right on her way.
President Groom.
Present. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment for persons who wish to address the Board of on any county-related manners matters that are not on the meeting agenda listed on the consent calendar. So I have a couple of requests. The first is from Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom. Members of the Board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Sulcom and Mr. Malpey and County Councilman Mr. Byers, thank you for your service to the county. Please vote to implement Laura's Law efficient and humane process that is effective because it creates an incentive for persons living with serious mental illness to engage in treatment in a civil litigation setting that is free from the criminal justice stigma associated with using law enforcement as a mental health care system gatekeeper. Laura's Law is efficient because it supports family and community-based treatment that avoids the high cost of inpatient and incustody treatment associated with using dangerousness to sell for others as the criteria for treatment. Laura's Law is humane because it restores the capacity of a person who is so sick they cannot seek treatment to the point that they can engage in treatment without family members having to deny them food, shelter, and clothing. All human life is important, including the lives of persons living with adult onset mental illness, as well as their intimate and non-intimate family members who risk domestic violence. Our psychiatric emergency room, psychiatric ward nurses, our law enforcement officers who risk random acts of violence resulting in intellectual and moral health systems, policies, and procedures which deny treatment to persons living with serious mental illness who are so sick they cannot seek treatment voluntarily until they become a threat to themselves or others or gravely disabled. Laura's Law has been approved in Los Angeles, Yolo County, Nevada County, and San Diego County later this month. San Mateo County doesn't need any more law enforcement officer shootings involving people like Edgar Arastado, Robert Connel, Errol Chang, or Yanira Serrano. Please vote to implement Laura's Law now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Good morning, County Supervisors and staff. I totally agree with Marty Fox from one veteran to another. My letter to Mr. Sulcom, another veteran. Thank you, Mr. Sulcom, for your nice letter regarding my candidacy for Pacifica City Council. Although I lost the election, I think 1,400 people that voted for me agreed with me. In your letter, you stated if there was anything you could do to let you know. Well, I called your office twice and left a message, and no one returned my call. So this morning, I met with one of your aides, Marcy Dragon, and she refused to make an appointment but gave me her card to email her. Is this protocol for all county supervisors? Because I made an appointment here to see Ms. Tissier, and I didn't have to email her. From one veteran to another, this has to do with the veterans' assessments which I attended. The San Mateo Veterans Advocate and a personal response from you would be greatly appreciated. And on another note, SB 1193 was not advertised in the Pacifica Tribune, so therefore you had no representatives from Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Harvey Blight.
Is this mic on?
Yes.
I'm here to speak to the folks here more than to this board. It should be reversed. They're giving you three minutes. You should give them less than three minutes. They're not getting the job done. Byers, Horsley, Sulcom, they're old school. This is the new generation. We need people here on the board that understand what's going on here. Everybody here knows what's going on here. Inflation, unlimited inflation, because everybody wants to live in San Mateo County. We can't have everybody living in San Mateo County, so the neighbors are fighting with each other over who's got that and who's got what and who's paid more for their house. My taxes and my property, and I've been around 45 years, have went up 20 times because of most of these people. There were tax people here. Mr. Byers, he has people cases where it's all one side. The DA is doing the same thing. They don't interview anybody. They just take a complaint and play with it for two years. So this pledge allegiance is a hypocrisy because there is not justice for all. The people here cannot get justice for all because of the price of justice. I have right now at least three or four cases in the state court and a couple in the federal court. I've been battling this group for 15 years. You don't even get to see their face except for today. They don't show their face. They send a clerk out to look at you and talk to you. These folks need to go. Please don't vote for them any longer. They're wasting your life and they're wasting your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blight. Luisa Blue or Robert Lee? And we will, they have requested and we have granted four minutes.
Thank you very much, President Groom and fellow supervisors. I'm going to be again speaking on behalf of our chief elected officer, Luisa Blue, with SEI Local 521. My name, for public record, my name is Robert Lee. I'm the home care director as well as county director for SEIU 521, covering 30,000 workers in this area. So we represent 5,000 home care workers in San Mateo County, as you know. We have been trying to negotiate a contract for the past eight months. I think everybody can acknowledge here that this process has been rather difficult for all parties involved. It's been hard for our IHSS members to see that other labor groups reach successful agreements while we have not. It's been difficult for SEIU member leaders, many of whom, like Luisa Blue, have been arrested due to acts of disobedience. And it has been difficult for you, the Board of Supervisors, and your negotiating team as we know that you value the services of our home care workers and you also want these negotiations to be truly successful. Light off. I'm here today to take really two steps back, and I would like to ask you to join me. You know, first, let me say it was deeply regrettable that negotiations turned to civil disobedience this winter. We recognize that such acts are always extreme and result in hardships for both parties. And unfortunately for us, we have not reached any form of resolution that we could walk away with. Please understand that because our members cannot strike, we're forbidden by law, a lot of people may not know that, to actually go on strike as home care workers. So we looked to civil disobedience as a way to express the urgency and importance of obtaining better wages for our members who live in this extraordinarily high-priced county. So today, what we're really saying is, let us focus not on confrontation. They were intentionally not wanting to engage in civil disobedience. Instead, we want to focus on something that we think is more important, which is a shared vision about a healthier and stronger San Mateo County that I think many of us in this room just want. And I would ask you to consider the 5,000 working women and minorities who provide in-home supportive services for people with disabilities and elderly in this community. They do extremely difficult work, caring for some of the most vulnerable people in our society. And many of you board members, I'm quite sure, are familiar with home care services. Their work is critical. It's really part of the social safety net in this county and needs to be valued with a fair wage. Three counties surrounding San Mateo are raising wages for home care workers that we'd like to share with you. Marin County, as of this January 1st, moved their wages to $13, plus a cost of living adjustments every single year. And then Santa Clara County, where we represent our home care workers as well, are going to be raising wages to $12.81 this February and moving to $13 next year. And then San Francisco, they made a bold move and adopted a minimum wage ordinance with express language to include in-home supportive service workers to go to $13 in 2016 all the way to $15 an hour, including the home care workers, to $15 in 2018. And they'll get Consumer Price Index adjustments every single year. So I ask, who benefits from these modest wage increases? First, home care workers, three-quarters of whom are women and women of color. And in turn, when home care workers are more financially stable, they can do the work that is needed to ensure that the elderly and people with disabilities have a life of dignity and can live in their home. And finally, the community as a whole benefits because these home care workers are going to spend in the local economy, right? And help to generate more tax proceeds for this county as well as the local cities. So in-home support is truly a circle of interdependence. But time is running out for us to come to agreement. We understand that San Mateo home care workers will transition to the state as of February 1st. Now, there is obviously some different information that you've received than we have received, but more to the point, we met with the state just last week, and they told us their date they're going with is February 1st, and they can't guarantee that they will give us any more time. And so we wanted to share that with you.
Mr. Lee, do you want to wrap up?
Yes, absolutely. I also will point out that half of the costs of increasing home care wages is paid 50% by the federal government. Of course, over the course of this contract negotiations, you have heard from home care providers and from the clients, and I would like to share with you now the voices of your constituents. The residents of San Mateo County have sent hundreds of petition signatures as well as responses to our mailer that we sent out to them, and we're going to pass that over to your county clerk to share it with you so you guys can prove it a little bit later. So we respectfully, again, more to the point, we respectfully ask that you take one last look at what you can do to support a more livable wage for home care providers and join us in taking a step back and really focusing on the vision for San Mateo County, which is a healthier and better community for all. So thank you very much for your time. And President Groom, thank you very much for allowing us to have extra time to deliver this message.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Now is the time that we will set the agenda and approve the consent calendar items. Does anybody have any wishes to?
I just had a comment. I don't wish to remove these items, but on our consent calendar, I believe it's 16 and 17, we are approving some substantial contracts for our full-service partnerships, which of course is important service for the county. But I mean, recently, there was a very extensive study done on full-service partnerships. I guess I just suggest maybe if at a future meeting, we could have a little presentation about how those things, you know, how that's going. It's a big, critical part, but I'm comfortable approving the contracts. I'd just like to make that suggestion.
Okay, Mr.? Thank you, Supervisor Pine.
And if I might comment to Supervisor Pine, Madam Chair. In the near future, we intend to bring a recommendation to the Board regarding Laura's Law, and it is inclusive of those types of partnerships. And so we'll wrap that discussion all into one, if that's okay.
Great.
Excellent.
Move approval of the consent agenda as well as the regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we will go to item number one, presentation of a proclamation designating January 2015 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Supervisor Tissier.
Thank you, President Groom. I got here in the nick of time, didn't I? Each year, the month of January is recognized around the nation as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Human trafficking occurs when a person is controlled through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, domestic servitude, debt bondage, or other methods of slavery. Local, state, and federal officials and public safety organizations have been organized in addressing the problem of human trafficking. At this time last year, the county rolled out a campaign raising awareness of human trafficking and joined neighboring counties in adopting a requirement that certain establishments post a notice with a hotline for victims to call. San Mateo County is committed to protecting the vulnerable and ending human trafficking through continued interagency efforts at prevention, prosecution, education, and awareness. It is also critical to send a strong message to perpetrators that San Mateo County is a zero-tolerance county for all forms of human trafficking. Today, we are joined by Assistant Sheriff Trish Sanchez, who is here to accept this proclamation. And with that, I'd like to introduce a motion to designate January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Second.
We have some public comments. So I'd like to call Carrie Gann from the Commission on the Status of Women.
Good morning, President Groom, Honorable Members of the Board, and Mr. Malpey and Mr. Byers. My name is Carrie Gann, and I'm the President of the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women. Human trafficking is a dark form of modern slavery that includes both labor and sex trafficking. The Commission has spent the last few years learning about how human trafficking is impacting people in San Mateo County and the Bay Area and are working to educate members of the public that it is a local issue requiring community awareness and response. We have a working group of dedicated commissioners who are focusing on the issue. This past weekend, along with the Anti-Trafficking Faith Leader Coalition, the Commission cosponsored a screening of the documentary film, "In Plain Sight," which was attended by more than 500 people at the Congregational Church of San Mateo County. Members of the Commission have also participated in the county's SB 1193 poster distribution days to make sure that anti-trafficking posters are visible in bars and other businesses locally. We would like the public to be aware of the Commission, and we have a list of human trafficking resources on its county webpage, which is csw.smcgov.org. The Commission is glad to hear of multiple ways that the county is sending the message that it will not tolerate human trafficking and will continue its efforts to educate the public. On behalf of the Commission, I'd like to thank you for proclaiming January 2015 Human Trafficking Awareness Month, which I hope it passes, in San Mateo County. We all need to be aware of this problem and join efforts to end it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gann, and thank you to the Commission on the Status of Women for their leadership. Now we will have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Madam President, Board of Supervisors, County Manager's Office. On behalf of San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, we are very honored to receive this Prevention Month for human trafficking, along with the District Attorney's Office and our joint regional partners, Alameda County, the Board of Supervisors, Congresswoman Jackie Spear, we took on this initiative several years ago to aggressively train awareness, partner with businesses, the community members, to bring this to light, to the attention of the community members, and also to take this very seriously on our prosecutions with the District Attorney's Office in San Mateo County. So again, thank you very much, and we are very supportive of this being Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Sanchez, and thank you Supervisor Tissier.
Thank you.
I may just make a quick comment. I had the opportunity to attend the SB 1193 training and presentation on Saturday, and I really just want to publicly commend Mike Calagie for the great job he did leading that session. It was incredibly informative. I thought I kind of understood this issue, but came away with a much deeper understanding. And the exciting thing is, is everyone left the room with that knowledge, plus with, you know, stacks of posters to go deploy around the county. So I'm going to frequent a number of bars I haven't been in for quite a while. But in all seriousness, I think it was a very effective session, and Mr. Calagie did a very good job with it.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Be careful when you're out there.
Madam President, if I could just announce, we have the Chief of the Chiefs, Manny Martinez, here. He was also going to join us, but he got stuck in traffic, just like I did. Chief, thank you very much for coming down. Would you like to say a few words about the human trafficking? He's heading the Chiefs Association.
Quick, like, I apologize, but, boy, a perfect storm for crashes on 280. I just want to say, on behalf of the Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, is we're happy to support January 2015 as the Human Trafficking Month. As always, law enforcement, we're always committed with the community to stop human trafficking. You know, our goal is zero tolerance here in the county, and most important, our commitment to always support those agencies and partner up to go ahead and make sure that we, you know, support the agencies that prevent, educate, especially prosecute all human traffickers here in San Mateo County. So I want to thank you much, and again, I apologize for not being here because it's really holds at the heart of us for the law enforcement community here in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Okay, Chief. Okay, we'll go to item number three, which is a presentation of commendations. Well, I'm sorry. Item number two, Supervisor Tissier.
Thank you, Madam President. I know, you thought it was too much already for me, huh?
Can't read. No, I can't read.
Okay. In November, it was announced that the San Mateo County Medical Center has been recognized as a 2013 top performer on key quality measures by the Joint Commission. The Joint Commission is the leading accreditor of hospitals in the United States, making this a very prestigious honor. In fact, only 37% of U.S. hospitals achieve this distinction. The recognition comes as the Medical Center has taken steps to increase healthy outcomes for patients with conditions including heart attacks, heart failure, pneumonia, and surgical care. With us today is Dr. Chester Canopoli. He's the chief medical officer at the San Mateo County Medical Center. And in December, he had an article published in Time Magazine about how the Medical Center has been a leader in implementing the Affordable Care Act and the 7,500 new patients brought into primary care as a result. And as a member of the Medical Center Board of Directors, I want to thank you and let you know how proud we are of the work that you're doing, Dr. Canopoli, as well as the Medical Center. So if you wouldn't mind coming forward, I have a commendation that I'd like to give to you and make a motion to approve the commendation.
We have a motion with second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege to accept this award on behalf of the staff and providers of San Mateo Medical Center. Several years ago, we set out to be recognized as the best integrated healthcare delivery system in the country, and this is an important milestone along that journey. The designation by Joint Commission was a recognition of all of the hard work that goes on every day at the Medical Center, the work of frontline staff, providers, leadership, and it wouldn't be possible without your support, the support of the community, support of county leadership. So we really appreciate everything that has been invested in the Medical Center, and we look forward to coming back with similar accomplishments in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we will try to go to item number three. Earlier in December, there was a terrible flooding due to the high intensity of rains that we had in our county, and some residents were flooded out in both Belmont and in Redwood City. And our county staff and many other not-for-profit agencies who serve these kinds of disasters were there immediately and were able to get most of the damage done and cleaned up, and people moved back in in a very, very short time. Red Cross was involved. The College of San Mateo was involved, providing temporary residences for them while this work was being done. And so we want to recognize and thank the hundreds of people that were involved in that. And we know that not everybody could be here today, but we do have a stack of certificates, and we'd at least like to call their names and make sure that those commendations of appreciation receive, get received. But if Supervisor Horsley or Supervisor Sulcom would like to make any comments, because this was in your area, please do that before we start this.
Well, I'd like to make just a few comments and really extend my appreciation for the work that they did. And, you know, one of the things that, well, because it was around Christmas time, it really displaced a lot of families. And, you know, that's really the time for families to gather together, especially for children. And so I want to really, a special thanks to the Sheriff's Department, to Department of Public Works, to human service agencies, to our vocational rehab. One of the things that they did, actually, I think the CMO's office, Mike Calagie organized, was really a Christmas party for the residents in Belmont Trailer Park, and the food was prepared by VRS. And so we had all of the residents there. And one of the things that was most dramatic is Santa Claus portrayed by none other than our captain, John Quinlan. Does a great job of that. In any case, they had him, he was introduced to or escorted by a drum corps from, I think it was Carlmont High School, and it was really very dramatic. Ileana Rodriguez was there with her staff, so I really want to thank all the staff. You really did a marvelous job bringing that community together. And I know the Sheriff's Department was there, had toys for tots, and so they made sure that all the kids had gifts. It really is a heartwarming that the community reached out to them. Also, really want to thank the Belmont City Council. One of the council people, Charles Stone, was contacted by the principal of the grammar school that kind of escapes my name, or escapes, the name of it escapes me at this moment, but she contacted Charles Stone and said, you got to do something. And in a fairly short period of time, the community raised something in a neighborhood of about $35,000 to distribute to people to be able to get them to put their lives back together. So the whole community, the school community, came together in a way that's really remarkable and shows the resilience and the fact that we, as a community, care about each other.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank Ileana Rodriguez and all the team from the Red Cross and all the other agencies that were at the shelter at the College of San Mateo. We actually, my staff and I took a trip up there the next day and got to see firsthand the real quality that was being delivered to the families. I was especially struck by the fact that the children were there playing, they had toys there, and there was an issue on Monday about how those kids were going to get to school Monday morning, and the Human Services Agency and others stepped up and got those kids all to school. And it was pretty amazing just to see the operation up there. So to everybody that had a hand in that, thank you so much. Also, just want to thank Recology, because my staff and I were at the trailer court in Redwood City talking to residents once they had come back, and it was a heartbreaking story about cars and mobile homes being flooded and just issues as a result of all the water. And one of the things that we noticed while we were there were the Recology bins were overflowing with stuff that the residents who had been flooded were throwing out, who were discarding mattresses that got soaked and so forth and so on. There was a sign on the Recology bin that said, we're taking steps to get another bin. It'll be here next week. And had we waited till next week, it would have been a real big, huge mess. And we were able to contact Recology, and the very next day, they brought additional disposal bins there, and their fast response was just amazing, and it helped clean up the trailer court there and all the debris that was laying around outside. And so a special And so a special thank you to Recology for their fast response. And thank you to everybody that's getting a commendation this morning. It's one of the reasons why I think we're all very proud to be, have the opportunity to serve in San Mateo County, is the way that all of you come together to help in those times of emergency. So thank you to everybody. It's appreciated and recognized.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Warren. And thank you, Chief Calagie, thank you Assistant County Manager, Mike Calagie, for your leadership on this. So we're going to start, and we know that not everybody is here, but we want to make sure that your name gets mentioned. So the first is Olga Crowe from the American Red Cross. And next, we have Captain Mark Weiss from Emergency Services. And we have Christina Ko. Dan Bennett. Sergeant Jim Gilletti. Stephen Mahaly. Chief Don Matei. Jeff Norris. And now we're going to go to Public Works, Jim Porter. And Joe Lacoco. Now we're going to Environmental Health, Heather Forsley. Michelle Billado. Greg Smith. Now we'll go to the Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Greg Monks. Marco Marquez. Kristen Brown. Judy Husseri. Roger Fielding. Cassandra Armenta. Dave Vogt. Siaga Silla. Brian Sasaki. John Garcia. Lisa Lucette. Dorothy Cordell. Deputy Javier Acosta. Deputy Fred Padilla. Sergeant Pat McTaggart. And now we have, from the County Manager's Office, Peggy Jensen. And Kim Hurst. They're down the hall working. From Planning and Building, Steve Monowitz. And Michael Gorman. And Gary West. Now we'll go to the Human Services Agency, beginning with our Director, Iliana Rodriguez. Selena Toy Lee. Locke Nugent. Robert Manchia. Al David. Rex Andrea. Ken Kong. Gary Beasley. Brian Mahoney. Debbie Patton. Randy Mira Shio. Praveen Patel. Nilda Cardenas. Denise Sandoval. Yvonne Anderson. Alberto Razzo. Ivana Ruiz. Tara Curry Martinez. Veronica Pina. Louvi Bone. Stephanie Perrier. Effie Verducci. Robert Antonio. Lou Anne Henry. Donovan Fones. Nicole Daly. Carlos Smith. Cora Cooper. Rebecca Wixson. Octavio Ortiz. Nicole Pollak. Casey Estorga. Clarissa Simon. Keith Whitley. Kate Singleton. Oscar Rentera. Mayra Alvarez. Oscar Lopez. Desi Tafoya. Stan Goldberg. Wendy Goldberg. Amy Kaiser. Nijilt Singh. Marvin Eisen. Ron Gonzalez. Lorraine Alice. Mylae Navarro. Min Min Lee. Navjeet Singh. Janice Carter. Juan Jose Guzman. Jennifer Rogers. Lorena Gonzalez. Richard Holman. Christine Matsumoto. Felicia Flores. Linda Holman. Susan Kaufman. Gary Moss. Sherry Rosenberg. So while many were not here, because they're all in their offices and out in the field working, we thought it was important that we did a roll call of all of their names. And for those of you who are here, we are deeply indebted to your extra service and your care for this community. So thank you all very, very much. Want to get some pictures? Would you all like to have your pictures? We'll get some photos taken?
You can adjust it, apparently.
Probably not. Mr. Wolfie?
Madam President, members of the board, let me add my congratulations and appreciation to all those who responded to those floods. But I also wanted to point out, and particularly note for their ongoing preparation for these emergencies, the Office of Emergency Services. It's one of those offices of the county that gets little recognition, except when you really need it. And yet, they train constantly. They always are monitoring activities in the county and deciding what resources are needed, when and where. And it's not just the big one that we're all trying to be prepared for, but it's these routine occurrences, if you will, of flooding and fires and other things in which they're behind the scenes, but their organization and preparation is key to successful execution of these emergencies. And I just wanted to thank the Sheriff and all the men and women of the Office of Emergency Services especially.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfie. I think we need a, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt these commendations to all the first responders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we will go to item number four, which is to accept the San Mateo County Veterans' Needs Assessment and Staff Recommendations Regarding Veteran Services Over the Next Two-Year Budget Cycle. Ms. Farrellis, good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Byers, Mr. Wolfie. Continuing on a positive note, I'm pleased to be here with our Director of the Human Services Agency, Iliana Rodriguez, and Applied Survey Research to present the results of the Veterans' Needs Assessment that was conducted for the county. So as part of the presentation today, we will go through the purpose and the process that we went through to do the Veterans' Needs Assessment, provide some data on veterans in the county, and then take a look at the needs that were identified through the assessment, as well as the Veterans Summit that was conducted in November of this past year. And then also present the priority needs for this population and best practices that are out there in the state. And then Iliana will present the recommendations that we have for the current fiscal year, as well as for the next two fiscal years. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. So the purpose of the study, we, the county partnered with Applied Survey Research. We have Melanie Espino and Samantha here today from Applied Survey Research. We partnered with them to conduct this study, which focused on learning more about the veterans in the county. The study included both looking at hard data on veterans that were available to us, as well as conducting focus groups and interviews with veterans and veteran services providers and other stakeholders in the community. The study team included an executive committee, which consisted of staff from the County Manager's Office and the Human Services Agency, and also a steering committee of more than 25 people that were from service providers, county staff, some of whom were veterans. And if there are some of the steering committee members here today, if you could please raise your hands, hey, thank you for being here. I want to thank everyone for their participation throughout the study that got us here today with a list of recommendations for the board. On the Veterans Summit, so as part of the assessment, we held a Veterans Summit, the first ever in the county, on November 5th. I want to thank Supervisors Slocum, President Groom for being there, for Supervisor Slocum who spoke at the event. We had over 100 guests there, and from different levels of government, from the nonprofit organizations, from the Veterans Affairs Office, and other community members. And at the summit, we presented the data that we had gathered from the assessment, and went through a process where we looked for priorities that were identified by the So I want to spend a little bit of time to set the context for who provides services to veterans countywide. So we don't do this alone. The county does not do this alone. We're just one part of it. We do have a number of federal, state, and local community-based providers and other groups that provide services to veterans in this community. And so we cannot do it alone. As we move forward, it'll be important to partner with all of these agencies and organizations and veterans in the community. So for the county and the services that we provide specifically for veterans, here's some of the areas. The Human Services Agency, we have the County Veteran Services Office. So we have four dedicated staff now in the Veteran Services Office, including two limited-term staff that the board approved for this current budget year. We also have the Department of Housing that issues what are called VASH vouchers for housing, for veterans, specifically for veterans. And there's currently the Willow Housing Project on the VA campus in Millau Park that will provide 60 affordable housing units for veterans, as well as support services. We also have the Veterans Treatment Court. We're one of 20 Veterans Treatment Courts in the State of California, and this is a collaboration with the County Court, the Probation Department, the District Attorney, Private Defender Program, and the Veterans Administration and Behavioral Health. And then lastly, we have the health system that provides behavioral and health, behavioral health and recovery services, including residential and outpatient treatment to veterans. So some data on our veteran population. We do have approximately 32,000 veterans in the county, which is about 6% of the county's adult population. The majority of veterans in the county are male, 95% male. However, a higher percentage of younger veterans are female. These women represent about 18% of veterans aged 18 to 34. More than half of our veterans are age 65 or older. And overall, the data suggests that most veterans residing in San Mateo County are actually doing well. And so the priorities and recommendations that we have will be more towards those that are in need, vulnerable veterans in our county. Many of our veterans served our country years ago and have found stable employment, education, and actually make a higher level of income than the rest of the county population. Yet some of our veterans do need additional support, in particular with housing, with finding jobs, and with education. So Veterans Needs, when we held the Veterans Summit, one of the exercises there was to prioritize the needs in the community. So here's the list and the ranking of each of those needs. The first one is access to benefits and services. And this is primarily benefits available through the Department of Veterans Affairs through the VA. But the main concern here is actually just navigating the system and finding ways to better coordinate the services that we provide. And the other top needs were housing and homelessness. It's very expensive to live here in this county, as everyone knows, so there is a significant need to find housing for veterans. Also, for treatment services, mental health, behavioral health, employment and training, criminal justice, and women's needs. So there were a couple of attendees there that identify that there is this emerging need for female veterans in the county. So some of the best practices that Applied Survey Research highlighted in the report, and they're in the three areas, programmatic, service delivery, and data-driven. So on programmatic- So, on programmatic best practices, one example of that is already here in the county. It's the Veterans Treatment Court. So, looking at ways to address those needs of veterans, specifically around the support services that they need with housing and employment. And then on service delivery, one example of that is through the VA. There is a healthcare for re-entry veterans program that does outreach and pre-release assessments for veterans that are incarcerated and about to be released. And on data, we did find some challenges gathering data on the veterans' population in this county. And some of that has to do with our case management systems having the fields there, but that data is not collected as people come in. So, we need to do a better job of capturing that data as we serve our veterans. There is the HMIS system in the Human Services Agency that's HUD compliant. It's more geared towards housing. But that is one of a number of case management systems in the county where we need to do a better job of collecting data. And then using that data to plan for and prioritize services to veterans. So, I'm going to turn it over now to Iliana, who will present the recommendations for the next two years.
Good morning, Madam President, honorable members of the board, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers. The recommendations today, we've compiled them in a Phase One, Phase Two. Phase One, consisting of what we think we can accomplish within the current fiscal year. And Phase Two are recommendations which will come back during the fiscal year. Need more planning and will come back during the next fiscal year to ask for appropriations. In Phase One, we've broken them out into these four priority areas. An advisory group, education and outreach, training of staff, and improvement of the data collection. In terms of the Veterans Advisory Group, what we heard is that there's a knowledge gap of what services are available to veterans in our community. There are various active groups out there, but there's no central coordination for dialogue of the issues or recommendations and a way to bring them forward. As you heard from the best practices, veterans, one best practice in this area is that veterans should be involved in how these recommendations are designed and implemented. That the services should be accessed across sectors and not duplicated. It would just create more confusion. In terms of staff recommendations in this area, the staff recommend your board create a Veterans Advisory Group and bring the diverse group of veterans and stakeholders together to advise on the implementation of these recommendations. The advisory group can also work to help the county identify any areas where additional collaboration and advocacy with state and our federal partners could improve the services to veterans. For example, we know in this region, what we heard, it's taking approximately 462 days for veterans to be approved or denied their benefits. Our second recommendation is in the area of outreach and education. What we heard, more outreach is needed. There's no single place to find what services and benefits are available to our veterans. There are different ways that this information should be shared. We tend to do it in writing or on the web. And we heard very loud and clear from our veteran stakeholders that we need to look at different modalities. Another suggestion we heard was that we conduct more group sessions as opposed to trying to serve everybody individually. In terms of best practices in this area, outreach efforts should be inclusive and active. Staff recommend your board instruct staff to utilize the remaining dollars of Measure A funds that remain unspent this year to develop outreach materials and increase outreach and education efforts to inform veterans about the benefits that are available to them and how to access those benefits, especially the VA benefits, which are so challenging. Human Services Agency will continue to provide the assistance through our Veteran Services Office to veterans in terms of applying for those benefits to capture that safety net so that they don't fall through the cracks while they're waiting to hear from the VA. And those are the CalFresh, Medi-Cal, General Assistance, Employment Services, and others. In terms of our third recommendation, this is in the area of training. What we heard, there are varying degrees of knowledge of what services are provided through our County Veteran Service Office. Veterans can access services through many different doors in our county, but not every worker that interacts with a veteran knows exactly what services are provided through the VSO. We need to do a better job in that area. Educate county staff on what our Veteran Service Office does. In terms of past staffing, we heard that there were issues with past staffing and the board took steps last year to add two positions through Measure A. And outposting at various sites. One is the South San Francisco identified a need that we have one of our officers outposted there, but that we engage also and participate in military trauma programs for women that, there's a work group that takes place in Menlo Park convenes. Again, the best practice is the staff should be well-informed and versed on veterans' issues. Services should demonstrate competency in serving veterans and an assessment-based coordinated service of veterans and their families, including case management. Terms of recommendations, next steps is that staff, staff were added. So, we've stabilized the staffing issue that was identified last year. Staff have begun to provide some training of staff on veterans' resources. Certainly within the Human Services Agency, we've been going back and making sure that every client-facing worker knows about our Veteran Services Offices assistance and connect the veterans there in capturing that data. But we need to do more of that throughout the county. So, instructing staff to utilize some of the existing unallocated Measure A funds to expand the training to additional staff throughout the departments in the county and our partner agencies such as the hot teams, our core service agencies, shelters, and others. Data. We heard from our experience collecting the data for this report, it's evident that the veteran statuses or veterans are not being captured in the data systems that exist. As a consequence, we may not be able to see where the county veterans are accessing services and where gaps may exist or connections. In terms of best practices, ongoing data collection, management, and utilization of that information for program monitoring and program performance. In terms of next steps, the staff will work with county departments and partners to begin to implement the data collection, or at least remind them. In some cases, we can't force anyone to do it, but we need to make heightened awareness so that that information, what's available, captured. We can certainly, within the Human Services Agency, do a better job. And with the advent of our clarity system being online, not only through our agency but with some of our partner agencies, we can certainly make that a required field. Phase Two now, or what we, the recommendations we propose for next fiscal year, consists of those areas where additional planning is needed to support veterans. And resources for the implementation of the recommendations will be included in our next budget cycle or Measure A proposals. One of them is the creation of a multidisciplinary team to better coordinate within county departments. The staff recommendation is that your board create a multidisciplinary team to identify and address the needs of veterans, including access to benefits, housing, behavioral health, and recovery services to strengthen our continuum of care. The team would include staff from the organizations listed. As part of the planning process, staff could collect and review data from county programs to identify veterans who are utilizing multiple safety net services and examine a multidisciplinary team approach to resolving those issues. For example, we're about to get our HMIS data analysis, and we could attempt to try to solve or connect some of those high users with housing. We could try projects around that area. Staff will also explore how this team could support specialized populations, as I just mentioned. In addition to veterans, there's older adult veterans, female veterans, chronically homeless veterans, mental health or substance abuse needs, and others. Basically, taking a holistic view of the issues and moving towards a holistic approach towards problem-solving. Our next recommendation for next fiscal year has to do around a housing locator program. Veterans will have problems, we heard, locating affordable housing even after they're issued VASH vouchers. Staff recommend county departments work together to support veterans through the application process to apply for housing programs. A critical component is to create relationships with landlords. There's a large number of VASH vouchers that expire or go unused as veterans are unable to find landlords who are willing to accept them. While the Willow Street Project, which this board supported and funded, is of enormous assistance, there's still more work to be done. We recommend that your board instruct staff to explore a case management program to assist chronically homeless, including veterans, to obtain vouchers. They may, so that they can use their vouchers and close the loop in terms of linking them to resources. What we find is we lose many veterans in the process. It's complex, it's overwhelming for them, so they fall through the cracks. We do not have a case management approach or continuum of care that assists the veterans. They may have to go back to get their documents. They don't return them, and cases are closed out. So, strengthening the case management. Our partners and additional supports. What we heard, more assistance navigating the Department of Veteran Affairs. We can't control this issue, but it's the biggest barrier they have. 462 days is enormous to wait to receive notice on whether you're approved or not. Staff recommend that our work to improve the services for military and veterans will continue internally with the county, but we must continue to engage our additional partners, such as the Department of Veteran Affairs. Learn about their new initiatives for employment and education opportunities. Seek ways to increase awareness of services each department provides to improve and expedite the referral and the filing of claims. And then again, the biggest one is how do we reduce those 462-day wait period in our region? There are other regions that have much better results and quicker results. This past year has been very educational and informative as we increased our knowledge of veteran issues in this county and how the county can improve our resources to better meet the needs of veterans. With the board's approval today, we will convene, we could convene a Veterans Advisor Group and begin implementing these recommendations. I want to thank the committee members and veterans who provided valuable input to this process. ASR for their comprehensive review, your board for your continued support of veterans' issues, and the County Manager's Office and his staff for their support and collaboration on this project. We ask that your board accept the San Mateo County Veterans Needs Assessment Report and the staff recommendations. Thank you for your time this morning, and Raina and I are happy to answer any questions regarding the assessment.
Thank you. Questions?
I just have a couple of quick questions. First off, on the outreach, how are you going about reaching out to veterans? Do we get them just because they come to us? Are we actually going out and seeking input from veterans?
It's a combination. We have our veteran service officers located in Menlo Park. They'll go out to Menlo Park, I believe. They are also now in South San Francisco. So, not only do they come to us, but we go to them.
Do we ever do outreach like at the legions? I mean, we have legions in many cities, and a lot of those are veterans, obviously, or veterans' families. And I think there's, I guess when I'm looking at it, there's some more unique ways we can reach out to some of the veterans to get a broader brush of who might need some help.
And we may. Is Ed here? Ed Dewey? Ed Kirkasen is the manager over Veteran Services.
Good morning. So, we partner with all the VFWs, Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Foreign Legion Departments. We work with them. All our veteran services officers are veterans themselves and also participate as members of these organizations. We have a working relationship in terms of referral. So, veterans that are in need of assistance with applying for veterans' benefits are referred to us through the legion. But in addition to that, we partner with other groups. For example, we're partnering right now with the Foster City Library System. They're instituting an initiative where they're going to have a referral process to send folks or folks that are identified as veterans or dependents of veterans to the Veteran Services Office. We also go out and do seminars on a regular basis at the public library, informing folks of what the veterans' benefits are, who is eligible for them, and how to apply for them. So, we're making some efforts to actually go out there and inform the community about the two most important things. The first is who's a veteran, because we see that's typically the biggest hurdle. Folks don't know whether they're a veteran or not. And then on top of that, wouldn't know if they're eligible for benefits and what benefits are available for. And second is helping them understand how to apply for those benefits. Because unfortunately, as Iliana mentioned, in our particular district, the Veterans Administration Regional Office has an over 400-day period to return those claims. And those claims can come back either approved or denied. A veteran can appeal denial as many times as they want. A recent study that I was looking at actually identified the fact that veterans who go through veteran services officers typically receive twice the level of compensation as those that apply on their own. So, part of our job is helping people understand, you're a veteran. You served, you were honorably discharged, you're a veteran, you may be eligible for services. And then helping them through that process of not only claiming, but going through the right channels to try to expedite that claim and maximize that claim.
I have one other question. You talked about the 462 days. Are we collaborating with Congressman Spears' office or Congressman Esh's office on?
My understanding is that timeframe is actually a very hot-button item right now at all levels within the state and the federal government. So, we have, our office hasn't specifically collaborated with them in terms of identifying strategies that we can implement, but we've provided information and our subvention reports, which we provide twice a year, is uses information to show how many claims we're submitting, what the compensation rate is, and the amount of time it takes to get those compensation.
I would just suggest that perhaps you do. I know Jackie's office has been very active in this area. And I just think the more we collaborate with the federal agencies, you know, they may have at least more influence when it comes to the Department of Federal, what it's called, the Veterans Affairs. Just a suggestion, just because I know they get a lot of claims, a lot of people calling them as well. And it would be great that we, it would be informative for them to know the length as well that we're waiting here.
We actually work pretty actively with Mrs. Spears' office. They have a number of legislative aides that actually contact our veteran services officers on a regular basis, particularly around those difficult cases or folks that have been caught or mired up in the red tape. So, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
President Groom, just a couple of comments that I know when Supervisor Groom and I, or President Groom and I were working on the Hope Project. We did talk about veterans, and we found that veterans who are in the criminal justice system were reluctant to self-identify, and so we had to work on that. You know, I was thinking about why people, why veterans don't think of themselves as veterans. I guess that's because they think they have to be somehow involved or in service during wartime. And that's not necessarily true. In fact, it isn't true. But one of the other issues that really actually isn't addressed necessarily in the report is that there are spouses of and families of veterans, especially veterans who have been affected or maybe had, for example, there was an article today about a veteran who, or that wasn't, the spouse of a veteran who died from the aftereffects of Agent Orange in Vietnam and was having difficulty getting benefits from VA. So, do we actually, besides the veteran themselves, there are families of veterans who may also be eligible for services? Have we thought about that, or do we provide those kind of resource or resources to them as well?
Yes, our veterans officers also assist families of veterans, spouses, children.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. A couple of questions. First, thanks for the very helpful report. You know, it's an area that I had in previous exposures to. It was very, very interesting. Just a couple of questions. You know, the report points out- You know, the report points out that veterans are overrepresented in the homeless population. And you know, I think we've seen a lot of success with the homeless outreach teams, particularly when they're able to reconnect homeless people with family or, you know, family support systems. So are our homeless veterans, do they have family in the area, or they tend to be relocated and without family? It's probably a very specific question, but...
That's data we currently do not have. I think we're weak in identifying those opportunities or what we're doing, and I think that's why one of the recommendations is that case management and continuum of care. We've got to do that linking, and we've got to look at the data.
And I also think the report's helpful in trying to bring some more focus on women veterans. It's relatively new in this country that we've had so many women serving, and that number will continue to grow as a percentage of the veterans.
And the trauma, the trauma associated with it is very different.
Yeah, I mean, the report mentioned that female veterans are less likely to access medical services, and I don't know if you have a perspective on that, but obviously that's going to be a growing cohort, and we want them to take every, utilize these services every, much as their, you know, male counterparts.
Absolutely. I think that's why we want to get engaged and connected. We are, we benefit from having Menlo Park just down the road who has a women's center. And I think making that connection and having our staff participate in those groups are certainly going to educate us more on the issues and how we provide services to support women issues.
Just a couple other points. On the veterans advisory group, which I think is a great idea, into some of the points made earlier, you know, ultimately, we, you know, we need a really strong partnership with the local VA. And you know, I'd be curious to learn, you know, have they been receptive and engaged in this study? I mean, ultimately, you know, we can organize all we want, but we really need them to, they have to really strengthen their partnership with us. And are we picking up a desire? Are we, and I imagine it's hard to even identify the right people to drive that within their process, and I wonder just where we are with that.
They were engaged in the summit, and I think under the new administration, they're starting to reach out. I think there was much silence during that reorganization period that they were undergoing, and we will try to reengage them now with the new administration in place. Because as Supervisor Tissier pointed out, we want access to that four hundred and sixty-two day period. Why is it a lack of documentation? Did people start? We suspect we didn't complete the applications, but where are these applications originating, and how can we start closing those gaps to get them processed sooner?
So one last question and a final comment. Remind me how much Measure A money we still have in this bucket right now? I guess this was the appropriation from the last cycle?
Right. We have about a hundred and ten thousand left this year unappropriated. We were able to bring in the budget for the summit under budget, so we've got some savings.
Okay, great. And then lastly, as you may very well be aware, there's this new Lawyers Veterans Group that has formed. Some of us had a chance to go to their kickoff lunch, and they, at that lunch, expressed a desire to, you know, assist, no, no, you know, provide pro bono assistance. So we should, I'd recommend you outreach to them.
Certainly.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions first. Thank you for the study. Thank you for the summit. Thank you to ASR for the quality product. We appreciate it certainly. Just a couple of quick questions, if I could. Can the county council explain, could the county council explain to me briefly what the difference between an advisory group, a commission, and a council, and a, there may be other categories of things? I know I supervise a horsey, and I serve on a council, and then there are committees, and what is the difference?
I always thought it was a commission, but no.
Well, you have, I mean, it, there are those boards, commissions, committees created by legislative act of your board. Some we call boards, some we call commissions. All of them are advisory, except for a very small number, the Civil Service Commission, Planning Commission, AAB. So those would be, you know, commissions that have decision-making authority. But by and large, the rest of your legislatively created bodies are advisory in nature. They exist for purposes of advising the board on various policy matters.
Thank you. Just curious, I guess the end of that line of thinking is, is the title Advisory Group the correct title, or could that be changed later on, or does it really matter? Just curious about that.
It's completely up to the discretion of the board, how, you know, if you want to, if you prefer that title, it's certainly within your discretion to use that title. If you prefer it be changed, you can do that too. I mean, as I said, by nature, they are advisory. So whether you want to use it or not is your call.
Sure. Thank you. And then a couple of other little quick questions. I'm wondering, I know that the College of, or Skyline College, has an active veterans group, and I've been to a couple of their meetings. I'm wondering if in our outreach that Supervisor Tissier brought up, if we can, if we do outreach to community college, and if not, if we could, you know, possibly implement that sort of outreach program also?
We do, and we work collaboratively with the colleges, but we'll make sure that they're on our list. I think what we're looking at is a whole new approach to outreach and education.
Yeah, good. Thank you. And then I'm curious, you talked about the data, the data part of all this, and I know there was a new system put into the core agencies called Clarity, I believe. And did you, did I hear you correctly to say that the current system doesn't capture whether the person in there is a veteran or not?
Individuals are not capturing it, but the system has the capability of doing it. So it's a matter of training, education, and making it a required, and that it be populated. The question be asked and that we capture it in the system.
Because in order to get access to services, a lot of, you have to go to a core agency first, right? I think.
Core, one of our veteran services offices, or benefit analysts, but the systems have the flag, if you will. We need to consistently populate it.
Thank you. And then just a couple more things, President. In ASR's research or your research, did you explore in California and the nation what might be called best practices for veterans' offices? I know I have a kind of a list of things here of programs in different counties, Zero, Eight Hundred, Entrepreneurship Boot Camp for veterans. Phoenix and Salt Lake City evidently ended the veterans, homeless population, and then Santa Clara, I understand, issues ID cards for veterans. And so I'm kind of curious if you looked to best practices in the research that you did in terms of crafting the recommendations?
We did. I think we had to pick how much information we're going to put into the report. So I'll ask ASR to step up.
Thank you. This is Samantha Green with ASR. We did, we went through the review, and based on the priority areas, we identified best practices on those priority areas. It was primarily based on literature reviews, and as you mentioned, a number of the best practices that you mentioned were included in the report. So areas in the homeless research, so best practices for identifying veterans and then any veteran chronic homelessness. So those pieces are in that. As was mentioned, it's not a comprehensive review. There are a lot of best practices, and the best part is that this is really emerging. A lot of the evaluation for the program-based pieces have not been completed at this time because the funding is so new and many of these programs are so new. So we kind of shied away from that program-based piece and kind of went with the broader strokes of best practices. Does that help it out?
Thank you. Just one last thing, please. On Phase One and Phase Two of the recommendations for the remainder of fourteen, fifteen, and then fifteen, seventeen, the ones in fifteen, seventeen all say explore, explore, explore. And the ones in Phase One, I mean, really wanting to create this veterans advisory group for the moment. And I think that's a fundamental first step. But I guess I would like to see something concrete in either Year One or Year Two. For instance, if eighteen percent of the veterans are women, maybe there's something concrete that could actually be put in motion about that. I have some other ideas, but I guess it's just to say the bigger thought is something concrete and achievable. It may be easy, like the Veterans Court, I know, has difficulty in getting veterans from court down to the Palo Alto facility. They need rides. So it could be something as simple as that, but some concrete steps just to work toward those bigger goals, I think, is important. Also, I know I put this on the Measure A list, but the idea of the Veterans Stand Down either this year or next year, I think is really, really important because this side, you know, this area doesn't have one. And Veterans Stand Down is a day where veterans can go to a central place and get all kinds of services. Yeah, you know about that. And then I really think that the suggestion that Supervisor Tissier made of working with the Congresswoman Spear and Congresswoman Eshu is important. I don't know how the four hundred and sixty-one days compares to other areas of the country, but four hundred and sixty-one days is just unacceptable. I know they both would be, you know, willing to talk about that. I think that's important, and maybe even a board member or two could join that conversation to try to work with the VA there. And I know that's a complex, difficult topic, but I think that would be significant if we could affect that. Also like the idea of, I know you answered Supervisor Horsey with the families, I think is very important. And then I just had just one last question. It says in here, under key findings, that the VA estimates that the veteran population in the county will drop, will drop by more than fifty percent by 2025. And I can recall a speaker here saying that it would seem as if veteran populations would be increasing because of the people coming back from Afghanistan and the Middle East. So just wondering if you could comment on that? Is there a short-term spike and then an overall drop? Is that the idea?
I think what we're seeing is a decline. Without engaging the Veterans Affairs Office, if you will, what population of our residents, youth, or young men and women are enrolling in the military? You may be seeing a decline in that area. Our most recent numbers are even below the thirty-three thousand, and we're at about twenty-six thousand five hundred. So I think it's a good dialogue to have, but I wouldn't anticipate a spike.
Through the President to add to that, I think it's a combination of really the aging of the World War II Korean and Vietnam veterans' populations, and then relatively smaller numbers on a percentage basis of those that are becoming, that are veterans now, because the service needs have much smaller than they were during those conflicts.
Can I ask a question? Could it also be that our cost of living or housing is more expensive here, that people aren't coming back here after they get out of the service? I mean, that seems to be on all realms, so I'm thinking maybe that might be it as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I may just add a couple more thoughts about Supervisor Slocum's question that was directed to me and had a chance to kind of chat with the county manager. You might want to get clarification on one point. Now, there are commissions that you, as I mentioned, that you create by legislative action, right? Those are your commissions, right? And we have very few decision-making bodies, and some of those are actually in statute. You have to have those. But the vast majority of your commissions and boards are advisory. They exist, whether it's Agent Commission or Commission on Disabilities, the Arts Commission, they, you create them, and they exist for purposes of advising you on policy in those subject matter areas. There also can be committees created by department heads that advise department heads. And you might want to just get clarification that that's not what we're talking about here, that we're talking about, it wasn't super clear from the materials that this is a commission that would advise, for example, Ms. Rodriguez versus the board. I'm making an assumption, Supervisor Slocum, that you would prefer to have a commission created by this body, the Veterans Commission, call it a commission, maybe not an advisory commission, but a commission, that's created by you and has a purpose of advising the board of supervisors on the veterans' issues. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. And that's your understanding as well?
Yes, that's my understanding.
I have a question about this committee, or whatever we call it, advisory group. What's the game plan for reaching out and forming the commission or the committee? Do you have any idea how many people?
Well, we had twenty-some-odd in our steering committee leading up to the summit. I think we need to pare it down a little to make it a manageable group. I'm thinking ten or twelve.
Okay. And we would have, you know, a very diverse group?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Slocum, I know that you are engaged in a thousand other activities, but would you be able to kind of serve as the liaison to this group and help in the formation?
I would be more than happy, Madam President, to do that. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
I think that would be very helpful to have a member of this board working with you. And then I have one comment that maybe you know the answer to. When Don and I were working on this veterans homeless issue, we learned that because our county has two different veterans' offices, part of the county goes to the San Francisco office and part of the county goes to the Palo Alto office, does that still exist? That kind of device?
Yes.
Well, we found that that was a real problem in obtaining housing vouchers. And we were very fortunate because the western states, veterans something or other, happened to know Don because she used to work at the Service League, and we were able to get some quicker action. So I think that we ought to add that to our list of issues that cause some delay in getting services.
Okay.
Just a comment about the delay in services. One of the things I noted that it was something like three hundred and sixty days, even when the vet had a disability that was acknowledged by the VA, it still took a year to get services. That's unconscionable.
We're certainly on, at the upper levels. There are regions that have much faster turnaround times, and that's why we would welcome any assistance in terms of engaging our partners.
When I think back to Congresswoman Spear, at least there was an article in The Chronicle maybe a year ago, that the bog down was in the Oakland Veterans Affairs Office, and she did a hearing over in Oakland. And I don't know whether that helped, but I think that's a question that we should ask someone in Congresswoman Spear's office also.
That would be very helpful.
I guess one comment I would have, have we talked to these other areas to find out how they've been able to get their numbers or their days much shorter than ours? I'd just be curious if there's some technique or something they're using or doing, or is it just because they're going through a different office than perhaps we are in this region?
No, we have not. It'd be interesting to hear how it is. Is it staffing on, at the federal level? What is it?
Okay. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have some speakers cards. The first speaker is Martin Fox.
Good morning again, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. First of all, thank you, Mr. Walpe, for your remarks about Laura's Law. I think it's excellent choice to compare them with the half-service partnerships at the next hearing. Next, I'd like to thank somebody who's sitting in the back row here, or who was sitting in the back row. He just walked out. A longtime county employee by the name of John Joy. Supervisor Tissier remembers him from the Community Corrections Partnership and the fine work that he did. And I worked with him last year on veterans' issues, and I'd like to commend you to consider honoring him before he retires by talking to him about the Veterans Services Survey that he conducted before the present survey was conducted. I would like to ask you to please do a service to the county veterans and our families and table action on these recommendations. Supervisor Horsey told me that he worked with Mr. Walpe for over twenty years without being aware of Mr. Walpe's military service. Now, that's understandable to those of us who served, because Mr. Walpe was a military intelligence officer, and who would want to admit to that? However, Mr. Walpe and I have grandfathers who served. However, Mr. Malpe and I have grandfathers who served in World War I and fathers who served in World War II, and they very rarely discussed anything about their service. So you see, both of us were just following the example set by our family members. Veterans are part of a hidden population. You can't find us easily. By the way, Supervisor Slocum and I are riflemen, so if you want to ask us how our day is going, you should really ask us if our socks are dry or not. I'd like to ask for more time, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Did I hear you correctly, Mr. Fox, that you are asking us to table this staff report and not move forward with the conversations that we have just been having?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cheryl Schaefer.
Good morning. I'm really honored to be here. My name is Cheryl Schaefer, and I served in the Army from 1968 to 1971. In my career here in San Mateo County, I was the local Veterans Employment Representative for the EDD office in San Mateo. I spent a career helping veterans. The issues have not changed. It's how we deliver the solutions to the problems our veterans face. I am an active member of ANVETS, which is the fourth-largest veterans service organization in our nation. It is through ANVETS that we have been funded, and I host and produce the Veterans Helping Veterans TV series at the Mid Peninsula Media Center in Palo Alto. We have been doing this for a very long time. A few months ago, we went to the county of Riverside, and we did a three-and-a-half-minute video with the Director of the Veteran Services, Grant Gausch, and one of his veteran service reps, Jeanette Phillips, and we have a three-and-a-half-minute, high-definition, movie-quality video, we just put it up a couple of days ago, that explains the services that are available to veterans. Because our county is so large, I would like the county of San Mateo to consider a digital video outreach as a way to outreach to veterans and to inform them of the benefits that they are entitled to. In our current technologically proficient society, veterans are overwhelmed with information. They simply do not know what their benefits are. They do not know how to access them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, I have to agree with this last speaker because I'm a Korean veteran, and I was injured on basic training, and my records were burned in the fire, I believe, in 1973. So I never found out what my benefits were until 2006, when I was volunteering at Seton Hospital, and they asked me to take some pamphlets over to Health Fair in Pacifica. So I spoke to the VA rep there, and she said, "Fill out these papers." And I said, "Well, I already did." And they said, "My records were burned." She says, "Well, fill them out again." So I did. Three months later, I was in the system, and I started to get medical help. But I've lost my GI Bill. I've lost my, I guess I could still buy a home, but at my age, I'm not going to do it. And so there needs to be more outreach, especially to women veterans. I could see on the screen where there was, what, 1% when it came to women and two votes? Well, what does that tell you? Maybe it's her and I, then. I don't know. But I was lucky enough to, after seven years, to finally go to Oakland a week ago Monday and explain to the judge my injuries and so forth. And it wasn't because of any advocates that helped me. It was because I saved a scrapbook, and I had certain pictures, and I kept my copy of orders. So if I get any compensation at all, it's going to be through my own efforts. Thank you.
Carolyn Livinggood, I'm president of the Avenue of Flags and supporter Golden Gate National Cemetery. I am not a veteran, however, I was a volunteer in the Coast Guard Auxiliary for 25 years and a former commander. Perhaps that counts a little bit. But I've been an advocate for veterans since World War II. While I commend you on finally getting this assessment needs in the summit going, I was appalled at how carelessly it was handled to start with. I wasn't even invited to attend it until two days before. They kept vacillating back and forth. None of the veterans groups that I attend meetings for were even invited to be interviewed. I did hear some other veterans, individuals, when I went to the summit meeting, were approached, but not the veterans like even the San Bruno American Legion. They weren't invited to participate. It seems to me that the veterans are the ones that should be talking and telling you their needs. I've been appalled, I've been fighting for four years to get improvements, road renovation up at the cemetery, which, by the way, is not only dangerous, but it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. And it took me nine months to get our legislators to write a letter to back me up on this fight for the road renovation. I have been, I have volunteered because I saw the lack of communication. I volunteered to comprise a veterans list. I have probably over 80 veterans on my list. I email every day jobs, veterans who need help. And by the way, it bothers me that we talk about veterans, but we don't always mention their families. This bothers me. Are we helping their families? But anyway, I just want to tell you that I'm trying to connect them the best way I can, but I think the county needs to help them, whether to have a hotline or something that gets the word out. There's a lot more I could say about it, but I see I've lost my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Stephanie Munoz, and I'm from the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. And I'm here to emphasize that although, as the name indicates, we're categorically against war, that does not apply to the veterans and to the soldiers. We're for the veterans. In fact, it's because of abuses of our citizens who have gone into the Army that that's one of the reasons we're opposed to war. I think it's very well, it's an excellent idea to bring the spotlight of the county supervisors on the veterans' situation. You've heard today really amazing and very helpful suggestions about how communication could help. And I would like to add to that, that there are other organizations, and there should be some linkage, that, for instance, some months ago, Redwood City had a meeting about housing, and I went, because I have an interest in homeless, so does Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. But the veterans gave a very good presentation, and I believe that when, that each of these organizations should send a summary, not a whole, of what they've discussed, and just send it to you so you have it on file, so that you can work together and not duplicate each other's efforts. But particularly, it seems to me there's missing the help of the federal government, especially in housing. Federal government, of course, is pretty good with VA medical. As somebody said in another city about the terrain trenching, there are federal installations, and they should, like Moffett Field, well, there are federal installations, they should definitely be made available for veterans' housing. There's just no doubt in my mind that the federal government is the beneficiary and the cause of many of these problems, and they should solve it by providing some place for housing on those already owned, owned by the Veterans Administration and owned by the federal government in general. And thank you for being generous with that extra few seconds.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming this morning. So do we have any final comments to, with to Ms. Rodriguez as she begins this new endeavor? All right, Supervisor Slocum will be able to assist you.
And I'll move to accept the veterans' needs assessment and the recommendations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will go to county managers' report.
Madam President, members of the board, my report is brief this morning. First is an update on the new criminal justice information systems. As the board may recall, in 2013, the county initiated a long-awaited project to replace the SEJIS system with a new approach whereby all of the criminal justice departments would implement separate departmental systems that would be integrated through a data-sharing hub. At that time, we estimated the timeframe to complete the project through December of 2015. In 2013, the data-sharing hub was installed, and in June 2014, the new case management system for the jail came online. That system is to be followed by systems in the district attorney's office, probation, and the courts. When the system was brought up, there were some initial glitches in how that data from the sheriff's jail system was accessed by the other departments. And so we wanted to slow down slightly the implementation in the other departments to make sure that we had worked out all of the problems that were learned from the sheriff being the first one to go online. I think we have now learned those lessons. We're proceeding with the rest of the projects. And while it appears that the original cost estimates and timeframe look like they're going to hold, the operational costs are probably going to be about twice the estimated $400,000, given some of the lessons we learned in the Sheriff's Department about really having to make a more robust system and ensure that all of the relevant data that the partner agencies need are shared without restriction. And we have thought through that process. With respect to Measure A, as the board is aware, Friday was the deadline for the submittal of the information requests from various applicants. We have received to date over 350, amounting to approximately $265 million, or, as I liken to say, many are called and few are chosen. We are now in the process of vetting those requests through the departments, at completion of which we will be asking some of the proposers to submit a more robust request. The board has or will be receiving shortly all of those requests, along with a summary to give you an indication of really the breadth of scopes, the breadth and scope of the requests that the county has received. The board will have a complete update of that process on January 27th, your next meeting, and then, of course, in March. We will have two hearings for the board to actually consider those requests and to approve those for later integration into the budget. If you have any questions, Madam President and members of the board, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malpe. One quick question, and then a little bit more complicated question. Will we receive those summaries sometime this week, or would it be next?
You should be receiving them today or tomorrow, I believe.
Today or tomorrow. Thank you very much. The other point I'd like to make is that we invest a lot of money in the systems, like the one you were just mentioning, the criminal justice system. There was the CLARITY system. There's the Integrated Tax Cycle system that's being studied, and that list just goes on and on and on, because we've invested very heavily in technology and ISD costs. And I'm wondering if there's not a way that we could receive periodic report backs on, and let's just use the CLARITY system as an example, since we were just talking about it. Is that working the way it had originally been intended? Are the core agencies finding it easy to use and reliable? Is it up? Does it communicate and pass data accurately and easily and accurately? And sort of post-implementation check-ins on those systems, since they do represent major investments?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Malpe? Thank you. Now we'll go to board reports. Start with you, Supervisor Pine.
Thank you, President Groom. Just wanted to note that on Saturday, my office, in conjunction with the Health Department and HSA and the City of South City, conducted another health enrollment and ACA outreach effort, and wanted to thank our staff for their assistance on that.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Just two things. Want to hold up this beautiful flyer for the camera. It's poetry for February, and Carolyn Goodwin, the poet laureate, is continuing with her Poetry is theme. And for February, of course, being Valentine's Day, it'll be Poetry is Love. And people can...
Could you get me a poem? I could use a poem.
I can get you a poem, or two. But applications are being submitted as we speak, and the deadline is, let's see here. Actually, you can submit poems, or the poems will be posted on the website starting February 1st. So Poetry is Love. Send in your poems. And then one closing adjourned memory. It's for Ron Bellatori, who was 76 years old when he passed. He's a lifelong resident of Redwood City, as is his wife, Anita. They both loved the 49ers, and they were season ticket holders way back to the Kesar Stadium days. He was an avid outdoorsman. He loved to fish. He had six grandsons and loved to vacation in Tahoe with his wife and two daughters. He was a boat and car salesman who made lasting friendships with his customers. He was a very active member in the Mount Carmel Parish, right up the road here, and the Italian Social Club in San Mateo. And his son-in-law, John Muncy, I think that's how you pronounce it, is a lieutenant with the sheriff's office over on the coast. Our thoughts are with the family.
Supervisor Horsley?
I just want to adjourn a memory of Elaine Larson. Elaine, she was a longtime Pacific Tribune writer and editor, publisher. Up until fairly recently, she passed away Monday after a lengthy hospitalization. She was 51 years of age, and she'd worked her way up from being a cub reporter covering City Hall and from 1987 to becoming editor in 2007, and she left the Tribune in August of this year. She loved living in Pacifica, was always cheered by seeing the ocean on her commute to and from work. She lived with her husband, Jim Carson, in Lindemar, and the Tribune will be running a full obituary sometime next week, and there are plans for a memorial being worked out right now. I met Elaine Larson when I was running for sheriff in about 1992, '93. I was interviewed by both her and her then-editor, publisher, Chris Hunter. And I know Chris had worked with her for about 17 years, and it was very sad news for him the other day was to hear the news that Elaine had passed, that they were very close. And she and Chris were, they were the first people... And she and Chris were, they were the first people to endorse me when I ran for sheriff. So I have a warm place in my heart for her. And she actually wrote a number of really insightful editorial pieces on the coast side about projects that were really very controversial. She always took it, she was a very rational, thoughtful person, really loved that community and to serve them well.
Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, I also have an adjournment memory for May Nichols. May was born March eighth, nineteen thirty-three, and passed away on Saturday, January third, two thousand and fifteen. She was a resident of the city of San Mateo. She's very active in the senior community. She was a former commissioner of the San Mateo County Commission on Aging, and at one point was actually the chair of the commission. She was also a founding member of the Seniors on the Move Committee and continued to work on the conference over the years, including working with Congresswoman Spear and myself on the twenty-seventh Annual Seniors on the Move Conference held this past October. She also worked for Hip Housing for over ten years. I just wanted to say that May's numerous contributions to the senior community in San Mateo County will be greatly missed, and our sympathy goes out to her family.
Thank you, Adrian. I have a couple also. The first is for Evelyn Hutchinson, who is married to Dr. Jim Hutchins of San Mateo for the last sixty-two years. And I'm sure you've seen Dr. and Mrs. Hutchinson taking their morning walks up and down San Mateo Drive and around, something that they've done for years. So she will be missed, and I know that Jim will miss her very, very much. And the second is for Irv Whit. He died at the age of ninety-three. He was a long, long-time history professor at the San Mateo Community College, and especially at the College of San Mateo, also a member of the City of San Mateo Senior Commission. He was active in both of those well into his eighties. He's been a longtime supporter of the San Mateo County Historical Association, and hundreds and hundreds of students have taken his class on California history and San Mateo County history. And his wife, Josephine survives him. And the last is Galen Marshall, who was the founder of the Masterworks Corral. Back in nineteen sixty-four, he started that, the Masterworks Corral, and it was the first sort of operatic singing group in San Mateo County. And it went on to reach national and international accolades. They traveled, performed in every country. And it was his, it was his great, great love to have, to have been responsible for the forming of the Masterworks Corral. So we ask all the singers in San Mateo County who worked with Mr. Marshall all those years. We're going to adjourn to closed session now, and we'll report back when we're finished.
Yes, thank you, President Groom. The board met in closed session to consider the three items identified on the agenda, the Gonzalez case, the Smith case, and then significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine six nine point nine. There was no final reportable action taken on any of those three items.
Thank you, and we are now adjourned.